Call this emergency meeting of Uphaula City Council to order. And I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Powers.
President.
Mr. Knight.
President.
Mr. Bennett.
President.
Mr. Cobb.
President.
Ms. Flurry.
President.
The request from the mayor was consideration of an ALDOT compromise. I had a email from the city attorney who wanted to address the council. I think it's appropriate that she do so in terms of the question posed regarding procedure and vote of the special call meeting. Courtney, your floor is yours.
Okay. At the special call meeting on January 2nd, what happened was, listen back to the audio, because you know, it's difficult sometimes to hear here. But when the minutes were approved, the minutes were approved with Mr. Knight having called just P A votes. There was no call for a no vote. And so, the cast, the people, whoever were going to cast a no, were not given the opportunity to vote.
Correct.
And so, in my opinion, that was not an abstention. And then also, under the Uphaula code ordinances, Section 2-72, legislation generally, all ordinance resolutions or propositions submitted to the city council that require the expenditure of money shall lie over to the next regular meeting. Such ordinances, resolutions, or propositions may be considered earlier by unanimous consent of the city council. This rule shall not apply to the current expenses of or contracts previously made with or regular salaries of officers or wages of employees of the city. So, obviously filing a lawsuit, filing a filing fee, with, you know, having to secure bond payments, all that kind of stuff would have required money to be expended. So, you know, there should not have been a vote at that meeting. And certainly, I think it's certainly my opinion that the abstentions in that regard would not be considered a no vote whenever a no vote was never called for. And then what happened was, is Mr. Knight gave you the gavel. You told Mr. Cobb that he could not make a motion because no action was pending, when in fact, a federal lawsuit is pending. The city of Uphaula filed a brief yesterday along with the other plaintiffs, and you would not, you told him it was out of order, and you would not allow him to make a motion. So, you know, and I'm disappointed.
Let me ask you this question. So, you agree that the procedure was not correct?
Yes, and so, I don't have authority to file a state lawsuit.
And you agree that the minutes are correct?
I agree that the minutes were approved.
As recorded, as recorded.
I agree that the minutes were approved unanimously that said the motion did not carry. However, under the law... Let me cite the case to you. The law contemplates that the minutes of council proceedings shall be permanent in nature and not susceptible to corruption or destruction. That is Chelnawt versus Russellville, 233 Alabama Code 60, so 1936. They may be amended to make them speak the truth at any subsequent meeting. So, given that fact, the minutes should reflect what actually happened at the meeting, and that is what happened. There was never a call for a nay vote.
Correct.
And so, the abstentions were not nos, because you can't abstain until you're given the opportunity to vote either way on a motion, either yes or no. And then if you don't vote either way, then you can consider it an abstention, and then you could consider it, you know, a nullity, like a blank, as what's written in Robert's Rules of Order.
Correct.
But until then, you can't do that.
Yeah, well, I disagree with that interpretation.
Well, a point of order can be appealed by, that is a point of order.
Correct.
You have the authority to make the decision on a point of order, but a councilman can appeal your decision.
Correct.
And then it goes to a vote of council.
Correct. And I will, I will say this, that this clear, as you agreed, is violation of our own rules, our own procedures. It exposes us, city council and the city, to litigation. And on that basis, what I'm going to ask for is that we ask for an attorney general's opinion on this, and make sure we're clear before we move forward on any action.
Why can't we just have a re-vote?
Because there's two aspects of the re-vote. One is, under Robert's Rules of Order, that you have to vote in, either in the majority for reconsideration. And since you didn't vote, and no one objected to not voting, no one called, no one called point of order at that time.
There's, there's normally a roll call afterwards.
You exactly.
You quickly took the gavel and adjourned. You dressed down Mr. Cobb when he tried to make a motion.
That's reflected in the audio and the minutes. That's correct. I took the gavel with Mr. Knight, and they didn't ask for a nay. It's an incorrect procedure. I suggest that we get an attorney general's opinion.
My opinion is, I asked to make a motion, and you denied that, right?
I'll have to look and see who had, who had, I think Mr. Knight still had the gavel.
I think it was on the table.
The gavel was still on the table right there.
Right, nobody had it.
We have the video of that. My point is, and the city attorney agreed with me, that it was an incorrect procedure.
Right.
And as a result, for that to be properly resolved, and to avoid litigation, because there's, there's plenty of litigation going on on this already, that we need to ask for our attorney general's opinion.
We're all here now today. We could vote.
You cannot vote on that matter, because, one, you didn't vote at the time.
We weren't given the...
I understand, and that's why it's a procedure issue. I agree with you, Barbara. I don't disagree at all. It's a procedure issue, and if the lawsuit's filed...
Had things gone your way, it would've been turned around.
Well, I'm turning it around my way, because I see it as an advantage. You're exactly right. I was in the affirmative. I wasn't about to jump up and say, Johnny, ask everybody the same name. You know, I'm not going to do that. That's why I passed him the gavel. I was for moving forward with the litigation. I agree with that. So, my point is...
Well, there's three council members here against it.
But that has to be made...
We made it in our silence.
Well, that's not true. That's not the way it's interpreted. Silence does not create a vote one way or another.
No, what would've had to happen is that it should've...
We were not given the opportunity.
I acknowledge that.
If that's something, please. During the time we was about, we was taking the vote, I asked all in favor, let it be known by the way I... You raised your hand.
And I said aye.
To you too.
We said aye.
Okay. And when I was about to ask all of not in favor, you, Bob...
Grabbed the gavel.
You grabbed the gavel. You didn't allow me to finish.
That's not...
And that was wrong.
That's not a correct...
Because I told you that night, I said, Bob, you acted wrong. I said, you could have at least let... Bob, let me say this, please.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You got one vote.
Correct.
You got one district. So does all of us.
Every one of us.
We got to represent our constituencies and try to do this thing fairly. I live in Uphaula. I love Uphaula. I love Uphaula just as much as anybody else. But let's do things fairly.
And...
And you did, not Bob, you. I'm not saying nobody. Jason went on and except, he went on and said, you said something too, Jason, when he said you don't have a case or something. But you didn't, you didn't operate... Jason, I believe you were telling the truth.
Mr. Knight, I understand.
Let me finish, but Bob, please.
Well, let's not make a speech over.
Okay. Bob, you just, you just didn't treat this fairly. You didn't. And I think you need to be known as the person that misproved it all this. You.
Well, you had the gavel.
Yeah, but you didn't allow him to finish. You did.
Yes, I did.
You grabbed it, Bob.
You passed it off. Regardless...
What I should have done, I'm gonna grab your arm and put you over. That's what I should have done, because I had the gavel.
There you go.
And I was in charge.
You should have. The point is...
I know from my own.
We had, good. And what I'll ask is that...
Can I make a point of order in the fact that, what about the fact that it shouldn't have been even voted on at all without a unanimous vote? Because of the fact that all ordinance resolutions or propositions submitted to the city council that require the expenditure of money shall lie over until the next regular meeting, such ordinances, resolutions, or propositions may be considered earlier by unanimous consent of the city council. There was no motion to suspend the rules and vote on it that night.
And, and I will say, that's a procedure issue, and we send that up to the, the attorney general.
Which you'd have to have a vote of the city council in order to send it to...
I agree, and that's my recommendation. We ought to send it to the attorney general for interpretation.
But we haven't had a vote.
No, a vote to send it to the attorney general is what I'm saying. Send these facts to the attorney general, let him sort it out.
That takes time.
Yes, it does.
So, do we need to vote on that now?
I would recommend that.
Am I making a motion? We send our, let's see, let me see, I want to say this. The confusion in the minutes, I guess, we would like to have the attorney general ruling on the confusion in the minutes.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, well, I'll tell you what, let's do a roll call vote, please, and saving flies.
Ms. Flurry?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
No.
Mr. Powers?
Yes. So, we will send that forward to the attorney general.
Aight.
For clarification. So, before we can take any action on any settlement, we'll need that response back. But Mayor, I'll allow you the opportunity to make a presentation.
That's not the case.
Pardon me?
You don't need, I mean, because the fact...
Get separate.
The fact is...
I understand.
The fact is, is that there's an offer that's been pending.
That's fine.
Regardless, regardless of whether or not...
I'm allowing the mayor to present it.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor.
I need some clarification on exactly what lawsuit we have in, do we have a city lawsuit now? Is the city in a lawsuit?
The city lawsuit is in federal court. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, we have a city lawsuit in federal court.
Okay, I want to, I want to back up a little bit, and just, you know, I've got my nose bloodied a little bit on this whole situation. And I want to back up to, I think it was the day of the mediation, which was the 17th, where a group of us went and mediated with ALDOT over the federal lawsuit as a suggestion from the, from the federal judge. It was clear in that mediation that ALDOT was not going to back down from what, what they are proposing for North Uphaula Avenue. We came away from there with a pretty, pretty poor deal, really. At that time, I think Bob gave Courtney her marching orders about proceeding with the state lawsuit, which he did not have the authority to do, because it had not been voted on at that time by the council. After, we started, on the, on the next day, it was our job to brief the council of the mediated deal, which was not that good a deal, and, and talk about moving into a state lawsuit. The first councilman that we briefed was adamantly, adamantly against moving forward in, in state court. For some reason, Councilman Powers, which I think owes an apology to the council, the mayor, and the city attorney, got up from the meeting and left without saying anything to anybody, and walked out of the meeting. Now, I thought he went to the bathroom.
Now, do you want to address the council? Or do you want to speak to them?
Well, I'm speaking to...
The council.
I'm speaking to everybody here.
Well, this is, you were supposed to be addressing the council.
Well, I'm addressing the council, and then everybody can hear me. How about that?
Very good. That qualifies.
He was not available by phone. We continued to brief the council, and continued to have the same response as to not wanting to enter into a state lawsuit, because...
I felt...
Except for, except for, except for Jason. Jason was, Jason was for moving forward. So, there was an immediate need, we felt, to have a council meeting on Friday, so we could, so we could resolve this as quickly as possible. Now, I know Bob was leaving the country, and, and I respect that. I know there's a lot of planning involved when you're going on, going on a long trip. I've been on trips, and I know that and all that, but according to some of the people, Bob, you were at the country club on Friday night. We could have had that meeting at that time and discussed this and got this clarified then. I did not call that meeting. That was a meeting that it was, it was clear that needed to be called because of the response of the council. Now, I did call the meeting on Monday, because we had a mediated offer on the table that we had to respond to, either yea or nay. And then we had, if, if the answer was, we didn't want, want the deal, then we had to vote whether or not to move forward in state court. We did not have a call for that. So, so after, I'll back back up, after, after talking to the councilmen, it was clear that they didn't want that, 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 the deal that we had, and based on the mediation, which it looked like we had a pretty weak case, and, and as it turned out, we did. I asked Courtney, as the mayor and the chief executive officer of the city, to present another offer, which was about $2 million worth of street repairs to be fit, the streets that we had fixed, that I thought had been impacted by not only North Uphaula Avenue, but just traffic in general riding itself around the traffic that we have on 431. And those streets would have affected everybody in this room. And they came back with a conditional offer of $800,000, if the heritage folks would drop their, their, their suit, and they would, they would give us a grant for $500,000, and the city would get $100,000 a year for three years, which is, which was, which really wasn't that great a deal either. Not, not unless we were all together. We weren't together, so, so I would not have suggested the council accept that deal. As a matter of fact, I never even talked to them about that deal. That would have been their decision. But here we are now, and we've drug this thing on and on, and, and it's clear that we have three councilmen that, that didn't want to enter into a state lawsuit, because according to our legal advice, is it was, it was much weaker than the federal case that we were in. And unfortunately, it's, you know, this is not the rules we make up. The state has all the power. And, and yeah, we can, we can sue them, we can go after them, we can spend all the money we want to spend. But at the end of the day, odds are, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna win. So, you know, to, to, to see an opportunity to get $800,000, which is, which is really not that much money when it comes to street repair, but it would have repaired some streets, and we would have got something out of it other than a four lane. We're gonna get a four lane. I, you know, you know, I don't know what your argument is now, but, but based on, based on not only our city attorney, I've talked to other attorneys about this, and, and, you know, we don't have a very strong argument. And, you know, we want to, we want to do what's right for not only the people on, at North Uphaula, on North Uphaula Avenue, but for everybody in the city. You know, that's the situation that we're in. And, and, you know, sometimes you have to use common sense. And, and, you know, we can fight this thing to the bitter end, and at the end of it, you know, unfortunately, hopefully it works out different, but we'll probably have a four lane. That's probably what's going to wind up. We had a situation this morning where, where I had to, I had to intervene with them this morning out there starting, and making, making sure that they didn't damage the tree canopy more than what they, what they said they were going to do. We have an arborist out there this morning from the city to sit there and watch and make sure that they don't. But, you know, it is what it is. You know, you know, I wish it was a different situation, but it's not. Now, we've got to come together, and we've got to do what's best for not only the folks on North Uphaula Avenue, but everybody in the city. You know, you know, that's, that's where I stand on it, and that's why, that's why these, these councilmen all have equal powers. They all have a vote, they all have a district, and they should be representing their district. So...
Thank you, Mayor.
Hopefully, you know, hopefully we will prevail, but, but, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not very, very optimistic about it, to be quite honest. I, I wish I were more optimistic, but that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mayor. What we, a couple things off of this, is that, one, the meeting that we had scheduled that day was scheduled from 11:30 till 12:30, or, or 12:30 to 1, it was an hour-long meeting that was scheduled. And the reason it was scheduled that way was to fit into different people's schedule, who had, Ms. Flurry had his working, had to come over at lunch, and, and the very first briefing lasted over 45 minutes for Mr. Cobb. I left, one, because of the bias that I perceived in, in the attitude, defeatism that was expressed, as opposed to the full balance, because the motion that, the one resolution we did have that was still effective, still on the table, was to use all legal remedies to stop the four lane. And I left at that completion of Mr. Cobb's briefing, it was an hour, once again, because I was leaving country. So, just to correct your statement there, add, add to it, so...
The only thing I...
And the meeting, if you didn't call the meeting...
Don't say this, Bob.
If you didn't call...
The only thing I say is, you don't get up out of a meeting and not say anything to anyone.
I...
That's the most unprofessional thing I've seen in 35 years of business, sir.
Look in the mirror. It was scheduled for an hour, and I left at the end of the hour. And I'm going to leave at the end of this hour, as I told you, I have doctor appointments out there. No, 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 no more applause, please, folks. I know, listen, this is a tough, this is a tough situation, and I, the council members are going through a lot of grief off of this. They don't, they don't get paid in, well, maybe they think they're getting paid enough to do this, but I suspect, it's, it's, it's...
No, nobody...
All right, that's good. We agree on that. So, the point being here is that we had a resolution on the table to pursue all legal remedies. The, that meeting I left, you, you didn't call it, I didn't call it, so I don't know exactly, doesn't make any difference, it didn't happen. I think some people had medical appointments. I was gone that Friday. I don't know if you called other meet, that next Monday, I don't know if you called other meetings or whatever. The, the point here is that, as I understand, you're saying we have an offer on the table of $100,000 for three years. That's firm.
That's correct.
We have a further offer of $550,000. Let me ask the mayor.
I just need to clarify, I need to clarify about that, that portion of the offer.
I'm going to, I'm going to present that if I'm not correct. Correct me.
Okay.
Okay. The $550,000 is based on the ALDOT director pursuing grants, of which he has some discretion to influence, and those grants would have to be matched by the city at 20 percent. Is that correct?
That's no longer, that offer is no longer on the table.
Okay.
Because of the fact that last night, at 6:07, a lawsuit was filed by Mr. Crowe, Mr. Bruce Mathias, and Mr. Don Kellogg. What happened was, is I had sent part of the complaint and the temporary restraining order to some people here, and what they did is they took my work product, and they changed part of it and filed it in Montgomery. You know, when, and they've got, so now, the 500,000 is off the table. Mr. Powers is listed here as an affiant, as submitting his affidavit to the federal courts, I mean, to the court, the circuit court in Montgomery. And the result of Mr. Powers' affidavit, as well as that lawsuit, is that, that 500,000 is no longer available to the city.
Okay, so we have an offer of $100,000 for three years. My...
Plus the 50, the 50 is still available in the fourth year.
So, 100,000 plus an additional 50, if we give up all rights to the meeting. I'm going to ask Mr. Martin to, if you feel comfortable, make a comment on that. I think you're not...
Are you going to ask him about taking my work product?
Um...
Are you going to ask him about filing a motion with, with my exhibits that he doesn't have, that he sent me an email this morning for, asking for my exhibits? Do I have permission from the council to give him my exhibits?
We haven't addressed that.
Okay.
First of all, Courtney said that's the right, we did use her work product. No question about it. I don't, Courtney, I don't think Bob signed an affidavit for that. I mean, that was, I know that was in one draft, but I don't think he wound up signing, okay?
Well, then the draft was filed. I've got the stamped filed copy right here.
Okay, well, I'll have to talk to Mr. Ziegler about this.
Yeah, I don't remember if he signed one, but...
But it was...
Remember signing one at your office?
It was filed last night. We don't, I mean, I think Mr. Ziegler is trying to get this before a judge this morning, but I think he's, I don't know if he's in Montgomery or where he is right now, but yeah, it's a lawsuit that's been filed by three taxpayers. It's a taxpayer lawsuit, and, and the thrust of it really is ownership of the meeting. And, you know, I don't think that question has been answered satisfactorily anywhere yet, so that's the way I see it. You know, we need to find that out, and I think we'll find out now, and maybe sooner rather than later.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, because I just glanced, and, and did you forward copies to the council?
I did.
So, anyway, the other part of that is that, let's see, Mr. Ziegler is who?
Jim Ziegler is, will take office as the Alabama State Auditor whenever they have the...
January 17th.
January 17th, and he's a lawyer for Mobile.
Okay. So, he's a, he's the elected incumbent, incoming state auditor.
Right.
And part of that lawsuit, if I read correctly, was a question on expenditure of a million dollars of state tax dollars that ALDOT does not have to expand, in other words, they could use federal dollars. And so, part of their issue that they're raising, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's a million dollars being expended of state taxpayer money that could be offset by federal money, but it's not, because they don't want to go through the impact studies, Mayor, as you've talked about how this impacts all of Uphaula. So...
That is an allegation.
Yes, a allegation. Okay, thank you.
And just so the council's aware, that the city of Uphaula will be an indispensable party in that lawsuit, because it involves a city road, and a suit by private citizens concerning a city road. So, the city will be, and because of the allegations being made against, I mean, in the lawsuit, the city will end up having to be, through actions and affidavits filed, will have to be either considered as either a plaintiff or defendant in that lawsuit. And since Mr. Pow, I mean, since Mr. Martin brought it up about the ownership of the median, I've never contested the fact that the city of Uphaula owns the street, and a part of the street is the median. The problem is, is, and as I've explained to the council, is that when the plan of Arlington was originally drafted, it was a street that was 132 feet wide. It was 1836, it was dedicated as a street. There are many cases in Alabama where, once a street is dedicated, the city, as a street, the city cannot repurpose it for another purpose. It has to be used as a street, all 132 feet of it. The city of Mobile was sued over government street. The city of Luverne was sued over the street there. The city of Troy was sued over, and so the council, and, and that's what is so unfortunate about all this, is that people assume that the people up here that are giving the legal opinions relish in the ideas of what they tell you. I mean, I have, right, I'm just taking, I'm just taking the law.
And he's done a great job. I'm not disputing that.
But let me just say this, though. If, I, I just, what I, what I hate is, is that the city, the street is for all of the traveling public, is public property, and the purpose of that 132 feet is the street.
Correct. And I think you're right, and I think you've done a great job. Your work has been exemplary in looking at that. And as you look at that, and as you know, Courtney, there's some, there's some points in the, in the ALDOT... And as you look at that, and as you know, Courtney, there's some points in Aldott's process and procedures about curb-to-curb and those arguments.
Right.
And those are part of the arguments that are being conveyed. I think the mayor's correct that Aldott has a notion to pursue this to the end in great part because of the mixed messages that Aldott and the governor received. But having said all that, there are avenues that the courts can take, and I don't know what the federal court would do in looking at this. They haven't done, they've stopped the restraining order. We hope that there'll be a restraining order. Some of us hope there'll be a restraining order. I don't think any- Is there anyone up here anxious to see the median dugout? I don't think so. I mean, you know, no one's conveyed that to me. I think your decisions have been based on the city council's view and slim chance of victory. So, as she described it, a Hail Mary. Well, some games are won by Hail Mary, and that's a position I still take off with. So I understand that the lawsuit has gone forward there. I don't see the value of giving up the rest of the rights to the median, to Aldott. We did that on South Yewfala Avenue. We didn't. You might have been on the council in county, but when they wanted to go on South Yewfala Avenue, they'd said they'd keep some of the medians and keep some of the trees and that, and you don't see it. I've passed out here information from the study that we helped fund on economic impact of historic district neighborhood. And that impact relates to anywhere from 44 to 64 jobs. It relates to anywhere from just under $1.6 million of value to the city, up to almost $3 million value to the city. So there's reason why people would take questions to our procedures and process. And I want to thank the council members for allowing us to get that resolved. Is there any other business to come before the council?
Bob, I want to say one thing before I leave, because it's on my mind heavy. And if I don't say it, I'm gonna bust.
Feel free.
Okay.
And I'm right next to-
We talked about Robert Rules of Order, right?
Correct.
The last thing it said on Robert's Rules of Order, the very last, is be courteous.
Thank you.
This council does not have courtesy toward each other. We will not, I'm telling you forward, we will not go forward in Yewfala as long as we sit up here and fight each other. We're supposed to be up here for one thing, to fight and build Yewfala, whether it's for the police, education, whatever. Now, we got to stop this. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but Bob, Jay, I mean, Mayor, Barbara, Bennett, and Lucius. We got to stop this. We will not move Yewfala forward until this is stopped. Let's work together. We are all human. We got one vote, we got one district. That's all. Bob is no bigger than I am, and I'm no bigger than Jason. So let's do that. But that's all I got to say.
I think your points were okay. Let's just talk.
Hey, the city attorney, like I asked you before, you're, I'm going on your legal opinion. You was in the meeting when I asked the same question, right, Bob?
You're exactly right.
Let's clear the record.
Well, she made it. She just made that point.
You said it was biased.
My opinion it was biased.
That was your opinion?
Correct.
Okay.
It was her legal opinion, and-
Let me finish. I respect you.
Thank you.
The question I asked her, do we have a legal, do you feel like a legal obligation that we will win? That was the question, right?
That's correct.
And the answer, her legal opinion, she gave me that. That opinion that I'm going on, and I will not change my mind, and I will not be dictated to.
I agree. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
And I'm not dictating your vote.
You're trying to.
No, no.
I still think that there needs to be an upper bound reject or accept the settlement offer, one way or another.
Accept.
Well, you gotta, somebody's gonna make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
That we accept Aldott's offer. A motion and a second.
Move to have that, is there a move to have that table till we get the-
Yeah, absolutely. I'm moving the table until we find the attorney general's opinion.
Thank you. There's no other business that's being stand adjourned. Thank you.
Recall Bob. Recall Bob. Recall Bob.
There's a motion. There's a motion and a second. You never voted it.
Table it.
But you gotta have a vote to table it.
We did it.
Read it.
No, we did it.
I'm good.
No, you can't do that.
You can't do that.
A motion and a second was on the table.
So you gotta hear.
Excuse me, can everyone at the audience please?
It's on the floor. So you're telling me you're not gonna-
No, I'm gonna wait to the attorney general's opinion.
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
I'm gonna wait to attorney general's opinion.
I'd like a roll call vote.
Second.
I'd like a roll call vote.
The meeting's been adjourned.
I'd like a roll call vote.
You're having a vote on the adjournment.
It's been adjourned.
If you stop and eat them other nights, you'd have had an exception.
I call an emergency meeting of this Yewfala City Council, right now.
Emergency meet.
An emergency meeting called now.
Second.
Well, I'll set it for an hour's time.
An hour time.
We'll reconvene for an emergency meeting. If there's a quorum, we'll vote.
Hour. Did you get that, city attorney? Emergency meeting, hour.
It has to be by two councilmembers. It has to be by two councilmembers.
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have two councilmembers requesting-
Two councilmen.
Yes. City attorney, can we have an emergency meeting?
You can have.
I think what we need to do is talk to two of y'all at a time, in my opinion. So if one of you would step out, and we can talk to two, let's clear the room.
Okay.
Okay, so-
Would y'all want me out?
No, you say, since you two made the motion, y'all say.
Since Barbara and Lucius made the motion, Johnny, can you step out?
It's bigger than.
I appreciate what you said. Thank you.
And so what is going to the attorney general's office for resolution?
Where's Ralph?
No.
No, not now.
Not now, it's an hour.
We have to give an hour notice.
Johnny's gonna go out because Lucius and I made the motion. So sick of it. There should have been a roll call vote in that last meeting.
That's right.
Whoever let that ass get you rolling.
Can I have your attention, please? Would everybody please exit, please? Talk out there, leave the room, please.